Welcome, everyone, to the September 12th Planning Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. And first item of business is roll call. Linda.
Present.
Tamara.
Present.
And I'm Dan Cobb, also present. Jenya is excused, so it'll be just the three of us tonight. Next up is minutes approval. This will be approval of the August 8th Planning Board minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
No, I move approval. The minutes are circulated. A second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Next up, information exchange. Start with you, Kristen. Did you have anything for us?
Sure. I just had what's in the memo, which was the cannabis caregiver storefront ordinance change that came before you last planning board meeting. It has passed the council and will be going into effect on September 19th. So that's the change to allow medical storefronts. So that language will be posted online on September 19th when it goes into effect.
Okay.
That was the only update I had for you.
Anything from you, Tamara? Linda? And I don't have any information either, so we'll keep moving along. All right. Next up is new business. First one, or the only new business, is a preliminary plan approval extension request for Stillwater Pines subdivision Phase Two. This is a request by A.H. Grover, Inc., for extension of the conditional preliminary plan approval for Phase Two of the Stillwater Pines residential open space subdivision on the 36.29 acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map 44, lot 032-112-000, in the medium density zoning district. And so the applicant, I know, had submitted a request and justification to Kristen and has spoken with her, provided that to us. I don't think they're here tonight. Is that true? Don't see them. And Kristen and I advised that they probably didn't need to attend. It's a pretty routine request, I think, so hopefully it turns into that. So, did you want to maybe just kind of give a short synopsis for the TV audience, Kristen, on
Sure.
the project and their request?
Yep. Yeah, this is the second phase in the Stillwater Pines subdivision, so it's off of Woodcock Drive Road. And they have had some significant delays with the review of their Site Location and Development Act permit through the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. And they are actively working with that department at this time to get that finalized and wrapped up. The board did grant an extension right off the bat when you gave preliminary approval, knowing that there were significant delays happening at DEP at the time. And that has gone much longer than they anticipated. So they are actively working toward addressing, responding to whatever questions DEP has and trying to keep that moving forward. But it's just been delayed. I think that's staffing issues and other things. So they're looking for an extension to keep their preliminary approval alive until they can gather everything they need to bring final back to you.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, so basically, we need to find and agree that they did their due diligence in attempting to proceed. And that they're, we find their justification persuasive. And then Kristen, as she outlined in her memo, some ordinances and regulations have been amended since then. And we would need to also agree that those don't impact the proposed development and don't need to apply, basically. Because then we don't need to reopen it. We can just provide the extension. And then I guess part three would be how long? The recommendation is six months, which is what I think we did the first time.
Yes.
That's been pretty typical, so.
Yeah.
Anyone care to start the conversation?
I would just say I'm in agreement that a six-month extension sounds appropriate and that any changes to the ordinance really need not apply in their situation. I think they've been making a diligent effort. We knew when we first talked to them that this was going to be a challenging timeline. So if they ask for six months, I think that's fair. They should know.
Thanks.
Agreed.
And I agree as well. So I think we could just go right to a motion, unless, Kristen, you had anything you wanted to add before we
No, I was just making sure you had the changes in front of you. Typically, if there are significant changes to the zoning ordinance that would impact a subdivision, that might be something you would want to reconsider. Does it affect the preliminary approval? But that is not the case during this time period.
Yep. Okay. So if someone wants to read the motion?
I move to approve the request by A.H. Grover, Incorporated, for a six-month extension of the October 16th, 2023, conditional preliminary plan approval for Phase Two of the Stillwater Pines residential open space subdivision on the 36.29 acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map 44, lot 032-112-000, in the medium density zoning district. Based on the planning board finding that the applicant has made due progress in preparation of the final plan and in pursuing approval of the plans before state agencies as required, and that municipal ordinances or regulations which may impact the proposed development have not been amended.
Is there a second?
There is.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. All right. Now on to new business and public hearing. This is a preliminary plan review of Mayall Mill subdivision. This is a request by Andrew Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC, represented by Austin Fagan of BH2M Engineering, for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create a 13-lot subdivision on his 49.83 plus-or-minus acre property near 279 Mayall Road at tax map 21, lot 26-20, in the rural residential and agricultural and business development one zoning districts. This is, this proposal is subject to major subdivision review. So we have an applicant.
My name is Austin Fagan. Here with BH2M, representing Andy Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC. Thank you for that introduction. I know it's a nice public hearing, so just to give everybody an overview, a quick description of the project. As was stated, this is called Mayall Mill subdivision, proposed 13-lot subdivision off of Mayall Road. Five lots proposed off of the Mayall Road directly, with eight lots being proposed off of an internal roadway that we have designated as Old Mill Road. We're still waiting to see if that's an acceptable road name, but that's what's proposed at the moment. The project was originally seen for sketch plan back in February this year. I know we had a couple of rain dates and ended up getting to a site walk on April 30th. We discussed a few things on site, mostly pertaining to site distances, which have been added to sheet five plans to show site distances at each proposed driveway as well as the proposed roadway. Based on the discussions that we had at those meetings and the site inspection, we have provided the plans that you see out front of you today. So as you may recall, two lots were originally proposed where Lot Three is shown on the plans right now, which is the area of the stream on-site. So this stream is, it's an intermittent stream. So it's more or less used to convey high groundwater tables or runoff when there's storm events, you know, snow when it comes through. And that's conveyed to a 24-inch pipe that goes underneath Mayall Road right now. There were some comments in the staff review about that that we'd like to get into shortly here. Let's see. We have done a pre and post stormwater analysis. That has been reviewed by staff and the third-party review engineer. There were some comments in the memo about that. Nothing really groundbreaking, nothing that we believe would make a significant change to the design from what you see right now. We have shown potential lot layouts with buildings, septics, and well locations, as you requested at the sketch plan meeting. We did put a note on the plan pertaining to some variation that may be seen when it comes to development of these lots. I know right now we've shown a 40-by-60 building footprint, just to be excessive, more or less, to show that a very large footprint can fit on those properties, as well as still fitting a well and septic system. There was also additional comments on that from staff that we'll get into as we move on to review. But we did put all that on there. We're hoping that we might be able to get into a condition of approval or something that says, as part of the building permit process, we can give a more detailed description showing actual proposed building footprints and things of that nature, while still sticking to the general layout of what is shown on that plan, with some variation just based on what the individual landowners or homeowners at the time might want to build. Another item that was brought up at the site walk was screening for the abutting residents at 266 Mayall Road. It's my understanding that Andy stopped over there a few weeks back and spoke to somebody. There was no major concern for screening. And if there's any public comment on that, we'd be happy to take and roll with that as well. Not super familiar with how your public hearings go, but I'd be happy to get either into the questions that were brought up by staff and the review engineer or maybe take public comments so that we can review everything at the same time, how the board sees fit.
Yep. So thank you. What I would like to do, there's quite a number of engineering and staff comments.
Yep.
So what I would like to do is walk you through it in the order that they're presented in the memo.
Yep.
And what I would say, to be efficient here, because there's tons of comments, we're not going to go through these line by line.
Absolutely.
It's going to be more like, you read all the comments. Which ones do you object to and want some board input on? And I think in general, what I typically do is, for each section, I'll ask the board if there's anything that they disagree with as far as staff recommendations, and there's usually not. So we're going to skip the things that everyone agrees on, if that works for you.
Makes it easy.
Okay. Let's do that, then. So
Some comments.
Do you want to, I mean, I guess you can talk about your requested waivers now. We're going to talk about them later, but
Okay.
if you want to just tee them up now, that's probably fine.
Yeah, so the one requested waiver that we had in our cover letter was for a hydrogeologic assessment. That was based on the idea that these lots have an average dens, or the entire property has an average density of less than one lot per 100,000 square feet of land area. Each lot is a minimum of two acres, or just under two acres, 80,000 square feet. That being said, typically, a nitrate study is used for smaller lots to make sure that you're not going to be extending your nitrate plume beyond your boundary lines. There are really only two lots on this property that abut directly to existing residences. And those would be lots four and five, I believe, along Mayall Road. They're relatively large lots where septic systems could be easily placed outside of, you know, any effective area of those lots themselves. Typically, a nitrate plume, you know, in relatively decent soils would be anywhere between, you know, 130, 150 feet from where the edge of the septic system is. As I said, you know, those lots are relatively large. All of the additional lots that were creating along Old Mill Road, which is the proposed road, those are more, the road is more or less built along a ridge. Those lots then break away towards the existing wetlands on-site. So there's not a significant amount of overlap where septic systems would be directed towards other people's wells, where the wells typically propose at the front of the lot at the high point, and the septics are at the low points of each site. The other waiver that was brought up in the memo, let's see if I may get to that, was for requirement that the 50-foot forested buffer may be broken for driveways only and the street, and to allow one leach field, let's see, for lots one and three, to be within the buffer. I think that the leach field issue may have been just a misinterpretation of what I show on the plan. There's a box that's shown more or less on the subdivision plan on Lot One. And that's an existing stone structure that's out there. It's more or less, we just showed it on the plan. It's of no major significance, but just wanted to note it there, since, you know, we're supposed to show rock walls and things of that nature. Other than that, I believe the only thing that we're going to need for breaks in the buffers would be for the driveway locations and once again for the roadway.
Any, I guess I'll start any initial questions before we start walking through details? If you're both at the site walk, familiar with the site? Nothing initial? Okay. All right. So let's talk about the towns consulting engineers' comments. So, starting on page four of our memo and continuing on all of page five. The engineer made 19 comments. Is there anything that the board is, that would consider contrary to those, or are we in agreement that those should happen?
I agree with all of them.
Same.
And, okay. So same here as a starting point. So, do you have any of the, any of those comments that you want to talk about with us?
Yeah.
For something different?
So, a lot of the comments I do agree with. Some minor things that were either missed or I forgot to put in the stormwater report. So those are easy fixes.
Mm-hmm.
The first one that comes into mind for a potential, I guess, disagreement here would be, number one, subdivision road grading appears to direct some water onto Mayall Road. We recommend a SAG curve from station zero to 100 to direct flows to the roadside ditch. So the road as proposed is going to have a 2% crown on it. Where we're entering from Mayall Road into the property, it's already a pretty significant cut slope, just based on the existing grade that there is in relation to where we are able to be on Mayall Road. So what we did is what we do with most of our designs, is we're going, where we're going from Mayall Road to a positive slope, if I may draw a diagram so you can see this.
You can use the whiteboard, too, if you want to go big.
Even better.
Big is good. Thank you.
So, we've got, and this is drastic.
Yeah.
So this is Mayall Road right here, center line, and you have a 2% slope going either way, either direction, to get water shedding off the roadway. So we're going to have a new road that's coming in at a positive grade. So what we do for our design is, so say here's, there's the edge of Mayall, all right? So what we're going to have is a five-foot section that comes, continues down at 2% before it goes back up at the maximum 3% grade for the intersection of the roadway, so that we can get water that's not, so we also are going to have Old Mill Road, which has that 2% gradient direction. So realistically, we're going to have water going this way and then stopping before it gets onto Mayall Road to cause any icing. That's very typical for what we do with our designs. If we were to have to put a SAG curve for that 100 feet, it would be drastically more cut, just based on, like I said, the existing grades of the site and how that, that's a hill section of Mayall Road we're having to enter. But be happy to take the board's concerns with that.
Okay. So I think what I'd say there, and I'm pretty comfortable speaking for the board, but I'll still ask them, is that none of us are civil engineers, and we're not going to do civil engineering here. And I think the suggestion would be, we're certainly open to something different.
Yep.
But that's a one-on-one meeting with you and the consulting engineer.
Love that. Thank you.
So
Agreed.
All right. Okay, so that's easy. You two can work on that offline.
And in terms of, let's see, other review consultant details, I am confident that we'll be able to meet those requests. Once again, in terms of, so with comment 17, provide engineered driveway designs in the subdivision plans for lots one, two, three, four, and five. On sheet five, we did provide lot grading, just for a, you know, general location of the driveways. If those driveway locations are fixed, we would be happy to stick with that. We are hoping that, you know, not knowing exactly what's going to go on on these lots, that we might be able to push some of the more finite design to the building permit process, with the understanding that it needs to meet the intent that the board sets of not sending water onto Mayall Road, not being in excess of 6% for the first 30 feet of the driveway, and things of that nature.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can, I mean, the engineer is looking for this because those are steep slopes. So we're not going to override something like that, but we might be able to find a way to be flexible in the approval process. So it's not, maybe, so it's not all locked in.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll talk about that one later. Okay. Anything else with the engineer's comments?
Nothing else with the engineer's comments.
Okay. And what I would say is if you do find something that's, you have a difference of opinion on in these, we're pretty much going to direct you to work with the engineer anyways, like
Makes sense to me.
on an engineering topic.
Yep.
So work it out and come back with two people that agree.
Perfect. Works for me.
All right. So let's move to town staff, then. So page six of our memo and all of page seven. Outline 16, staff comments. So I think I'll start with the same process. Was there anything in particular that stood out to the board that you feel differently than staff?
No.
No.
Okay. And I didn't have anything different either, so we'll start from a point of, we're basically supportive of what staff recommended and let us know what you're not in alignment with, if anything.
Yeah, just a few clarifications here. So as you may remember from the last plan, we did have two lots proposed where Lot Three is currently shown. On the site walk, we talked about not wanting to impact that nerve setback area. So during the design, we did put in a footprint of a 28-by-40 house that can go within the allowable building envelope, and that would have allowed a 20-foot defensible area around it. Kristen brought to my attention that for fire safety reasons, there is a 30-foot defensible area required around each building.
It's not a requirement. It's not in our ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It's just the best practices.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep.
There was also something brought up about potentially having an access off of the proposed roadway rather than Mayall Road for that site, which would include a wetland impact. So my question to the board would be, there is, so what we currently show as open space is about double what is required for the site. A fair amount of that area, or the majority of that area, is developable uplands. So we would wonder if, you know, if there is that 30-foot preference on defensible area to get a building at the front of that site, would the board be okay with some level of impact within the 75-foot buffer where the stream is not a full-time, it's not perennial? You know, it's not running as a result of groundwater. It's not currently going all the time. Would you be okay with some sort of impact where we've reduced the number of lots to one and significantly reduce the impact that'll be seen in the area? Or there's also an opportunity where a driveway could be placed across that stream channel to the uplands at the backside of the site in order to have a house site? Appkins really just hoping to not completely lose a lot off of this, but looking to see how the board feels about it based on our, knowing that we had talked about it at our site walk.
So, I'm not sure I completely, I thought I followed the first part, which is, so you've got open space behind Lot Three, and you're wondering if you can pull the house forward so it's further from that open space, but it might infringe on the buffer? Did I get that right?
So we were
But then I lost you on the second part.
Yeah, I probably rambled too much. So what we're looking at here is, we've got a pretty, you know, good amount of area where we can put a house and a driveway in there, still getting a septic and a well. In order to have the defensible space that's desired, I guess, for fire purposes, it would require, you know, some level of cutting within that buffer, not necessarily building a structure within the 75-foot buffer, but just clearing some trees. I know that we had spoke at the site walk about not impacting that area, but in hopes of not completely losing hope of getting at least one lot where we had originally hoped for two, another option would be to come across the stream and build in the larger portion of upland at the back of the site, which would give plenty of defensible space and also would be permissible through the Army Corps and the DEP. Looking for, more or less, your take on if you would allow either of those situations.
So your defensible space, you're referring to the 30-foot
Yes.
cleared?
Okay. So more or less just cutting trees in order to get it room, I suppose.
Okay. Yeah, we can maybe, since we're here talking about it. Any thoughts on that idea from the board?
I guess I, the defensible area isn't a concept that I am that familiar with. It sounds like, like it's just pushing the tree cover back a bit so that if there were a fire, it wouldn't connect to the trees?
The concept is for forest fires.
Okay.
That ideally for a forest fire, you'd have a 30-foot cleared area around your home.
I see.
So that it doesn't get impacted by a forest fire. Those are, it's like a recommendation.
Gotcha.
It's not something the board has to hold to. It was just something that was flagged because Lot Three is fairly tight.
Yeah.
But if you prefer it the way it's presented, you're avoiding a wetland impact.
Yeah.
If you prefer it the way it's presented, the curb cut is off the main road.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're having a wetland impact again with the driveway.
It's, I mean, I'm not an expert, but it seems like the danger of forest fires in this area is on the low side. And I would rather see less impact on wetlands and keeping the open space as maximum as possible, even if it meant that the defensible area was a bit less. And I would rather see the buffer stay and not have more of the defensible area cleared, if that's an option the board has, which it sounds like is the case. If we were to allow that, how big would the defensible area then be for Lot Three?
So more or less, it would just, like I said, would be, we would be looking for 30-foot around structure. So the existing setback from the stream, if you will, is 75 feet. If that could be allowed to be, you know, a clearing limit between 50 to 75 feet, instead of up to the 75 feet, that would be great. So you'd still have 50-foot of fully wooded area between the edge of the channel and where any structure would ever be built.
So is that, or what you're saying is that the developer still wants the 30-foot of defensible area? So you still want to keep it, you want to clear to 30-foot around it? And you want to be able to clear further into the stream? Is that
If that is, you know, the preference for fire purposes, you know, just keeping things away from the housing, it can work with a smaller housing footprint either way. I wish don't want to paint anybody into a corner with this one, really.
Okay. I'd be more inclined to keep the stream protected, keep the open spaces, you've shown it, and show a smaller building envelope. I think people are moving towards smaller houses anyway. I bet you still could do just fine with a smaller house. That's my feedback.
Okay.
Tamara?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I agree as well. I mean, if somebody wants to meet that, they can build a smaller house and do that. There's plenty of people that don't clear 30 feet all the way around their house. So if someone wants to not do that, they can take that decision, I guess, as far as I'm concerned. But I would say we don't, we don't want to get into clearing into the 50-foot buffer to the road.
Absolutely.
Or the stream.
Absolutely.
What's that?
Or the seventy-five foot buffer to the stream.
Right, yeah, there's just, I mean, you already have a way to get a house there. So if that one happens to be smaller or more tightly integrated with the forest, then you've got a couple of options.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Any other ones that you wanted to cover?
Let's see, there was one that caught my eye. Bear with me for a moment here. Let's see, we have the open space. There was a question on if the board was agreeable with the access to open space, which if, if you agree with comments, I assume that would be, um, so what we do show for open space right now would be all of this area right here. Access to it would be via upland coming off of a, a twenty-five foot access easement along the backside of the property. That would remain even if future development ever were to take place on the property.
So this one, we talked a lot about on the site, as I remember. And I guess my question is, does, and it's more, it's for Kristen, I guess, does the ax, the proposed access meet the requirement as far as, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but how far into the road before you have to have an access point?
I think you're thinking of open space subdivision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. It's just open, it's just open space, not...
Yeah, this one is just straight up open space, which requires access from the road.
Right.
But doesn't necessarily specify that it be midway like, like our OS does.
Yep, thank you, sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let me just see if he's, you are done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, with, with this section, go ahead.
My question on that issue of open space, I'm just looking at the plan, and it looks like if the access were to come off and around lot ten, is that what you're saying? It looks like it crosses a wetland, how will it cross there? Will it just, like, will there be a trail where they'll have, what? Or will it just be an area that's made available and to this lot? And nothing will sort of facilitate access, is that the plan?
More or less, it'll be undeveloped area. If people want to access it, they can. You know, when we were on our site walk, we did walk across a couple of wetland areas, and it didn't stop us from getting across there.
Yeah.
So if people do wanna use it for passive recreation, you know, it's, it is available. But there might be some times where you get your feet wet getting out there.
Okay, you're not planning to make a trail or anything, it's just gonna be available?
Correct.
Thank you.
Camera? I had just one thing, and you, I'm sure it's fine, but the way you said it was a little bit vague, was regarding the buffering for the neighbor across the street. Just because the way you said it was that the applicant went over and talked to someone and like they did, it was sort of vague, like, I don't know who they talked to. And it would be good if that was more certain, like specifically...
What's that? I said I can get some more details on that. Is my understanding that there was a gentleman that came to the door, is that correct, Andy?
He was outside doing work, and I assume it was the current...
You already used the mics, so the public can hear you.
That's kind of my point, I wanna make sure that you talked to the right person, like...
I apologize, I didn't get his name, but...
That's fine.
He inherited, it was my understanding, inherited the property from his mother, and he was in the process of rehabbing it, he's gonna rent it out, and he said he, it was no concern of his to get, to have that, he wasn't gonna require it, so.
Okay, I guess from my standpoint, it would be good to tie that off a little better. Let's make sure, let's certain that it was the owner, the right person. Not a big deal, I'm sure, I'm sure we can get that done.
Absolutely. Thanks, Andy.
Okay. I think the other thing I had, we can talk about later, so that's fine. Okay, let's, um, I'm gonna open up to the public unless anyone has anything they wanna talk about right now. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I see a couple of people in the audience who may wanna speak on the topic. So if anyone from the public has any comments, please. Nothing, okay. We have our town council liaison would like to speak.
Dan McGuire, Town Council Liaison. The only thing I just wanted to point out is the fact that Mayall Road has the potential to be a road that could be turned over to the state because it does connect Route one fifteen with two oh two one hundred. In future plans, it's, it, there, there are no specific plans now to do that, but just wanted to make the board sort of cognizant of the fact that as we add driveways to this, eventually we'd reach a critical mass where that might inhibit the council's future ability to, to, to make that kind of a change. So I just wanted to plant that seed. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? All right, I'll close the public comment then. Okay, um, let me just look through here. So Kristen outlined recommended changes, I was, I'm not sure we need to walk through that because I believe we've incorporated all of those by our previous discussion. So do you guys agree with that? We are basically supporting all of these recommended changes?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we can go through some discussion that Kristen helpfully put in front of us. First one would be the waiver, and whether we support that or not, we would vote later, but we can talk about it now. So waivers are typically, just for your benefit, not something that we often grant. There's typically gotta be a good reason for it. And the staff wasn't supportive of it, so I don't, I don't have high hopes for you right now, but we'll see what the board has to say.
That's fair.
I do not support it.
Same, I think you mentioned the proximity to other lots, but the, the study is also about proximity to the lots inside of the development, and I would not be inclined to support the waiver, I think.
Yeah, and I also fall into that agreement.
Thank you.
And then I guess I'll say the same thing and ask the same question for the second one, which is septic field into the buffer for lot one and lot three, which I, I definitely don't support that.
Yeah, I think as, as you pointed out, though, I think that was my, that was my error. I think I'm seeing that, that box and reading septic, but it, septic is above the word septic.
I, I could've called it out a little more easily on the plan, that that was not a...
So that is not a requested waiver, then?
It is not a requested waiver, it's one that jumped out at me as, that would need a waiver from you if it's proposed. The lot three septic systems are very close to the buffer, and Doug in particular had, had some concerns about their proximity to the buffer and whether some of the, this associated slope would impact the buffer, and if you wanted to allow that or not. But no, lot one is my error.
Okay, yep, thank you. Okay, now we're back to lot three and what the board thinks about defining the building envelope. So we gave some guidance on the clearing aspect of it, but not necessarily the actual layout, so.
Yeah, I do not support a waiver.
Well, it's not a waiver, I think it's, and I guess I'll ask Kristen what you were thinking of when you're talking about a more detailed lot layout. Are you thinking like defining a specific buildable area, house location, is that?
Yes, yeah, like having, that's, yeah, like it's into number three, getting into like a real, much more detailed plan of lot three that shows, you know, the full extent of where the, where the septic impact would be, the, the well location, the house two size with clearing.
The thirty-foot.
Just, just so the board can have a more complete understanding of how that lot's gonna work.
It sounds like, yeah. It sounded like you were already agreeable to that?
It's easy enough, you know, we can come up with a, a workable footprint, make sure there's a driveway that gets in there. And just for your, just to let you know, the, the septics that we show or the leach field areas that we show on each site would be for a stone bed, twenty by forty, I believe. There are opportunities to use proprietary systems, which would be about a third the footprint of that. So we can just verify that everything will work. If a proprietary system would be required to, to stay outside of the buffers, we're happy to, happy to delineate that on the plan, too.
Go ahead.
I would just say, staying outside of the buffer would be very important, so...
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's the gist of the message from the board is stay out of all those buffers, string and road. Okay, next up, number four, and this was my other thing from the staff comments that I was gonna mention, so I'll save it till now. But does the board want to require a sidewalk or right-of-way for future sidewalk along the internal subdivision road? And so my comment there is, yes, I would prefer a paved sidewalk, is my thought. But I'm wanting to hear what the rest of the board is thinking.
I, I, at minimum, would want a right-of-way, but of course, a private subdivision, if it doesn't get built now, it's not gonna get built later. And sidewalks, they really are great for neighborhoods. They, they just make them a lot more friendly, and I, I know it's not free to build them, but it's, it's safer, and I like the way that the road curves because that slows things down. But I would be inclined to request a sidewalk as well, where we have the power to do so. I, I want one.
Now, is there any consideration here for proximity to existing sidewalks in the area? I know, once we get up to Mayall Road, now you take a left, get over to two oh two. I'm not sure where the nearest other walkable area may be, but, yeah, that's something the board may take into consideration.
I've no doubt that there, the next sidewalk is quite a distance away. I am familiar with this area, it's near my home. But I, I still think that sidewalks are appropriate. You know, you only get sidewalks that come together when you build them when you can. And especially if this road becomes busier, if it gets deeded to the state, even if traffic on this road is still going to be just the subdivision, it, it's just, it just creates a very nice, better development. And you, you do hope to develop the rest of it later, so you're adding more traffic later. So sidewalks, yes.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. The infill vegetation, so that was a discussion point at the site walk. There's a question about how, how good and thick that buffer was. Kristen, you made reference in the memo that staff made a subsequent visit after the leafout occurred. And I think you had indicated, if I remember right, that it seemed adequate?
Yes, yeah, when we went in the rain, I think it was April, it was, it looked pretty sparse, but everything does. We went out in particular to look at the, the bank for the, for the stream and just to have a good handle on that and whether there were wetlands associated, and just take a peek at the, at the growth as well at the time. And it looks, it looks pretty nice right now, in my opinion, it's rather full. There are a couple of areas that are a little thinner. Obviously, the existing access road is cleared, and it's not going to be the road. I guess my only question really for the board was if you, if you have driven by and you agree on the whole, or if you also, if you'd wanna see plantings where the old road is being, you know, would become part of a lot and maybe a driveway? Or if you wanna see actual plantings there, or just let it grow in? Because that's the only spot that's really open.
Yeah.
So I think with that area, if you look at sheet one of the plan, there's about a fifty-foot, it's sixty-three point six eight linear foot section to the left of the proposed entrance. That is where my truck, my truck was parked during the site walk, relatively narrow right now. If you go to then sheet three of the plan, you'll see that there's going to be a somewhat substantial ditching area in order to get, you know, all of the, the existing ditch tied in with a new culvert for the roadway, make sure there's enough culvert, or cover over the culvert. So I think that most of that area will be utilized for grading the, as the, the road is developed. So it'll look, it'll look natural, more or less, from, from what there is. You know, you'll, you'll be able to see the road, it won't, won't be overly abundant from as you're coming from the left side of Mayall Road, but the area will be utilized.
Yeah, I think it seems fine to me. I don't know that there needs to be any extra plantings, but thoughts?
I would, I would just say, again, I'm familiar with this area, and the less we disturb the vegetation that's there, the better. And I think I'd rather see you spend your money on sidewalks than on plantings, which may or may not even make it in the midst of, you know, what's there already. I, I don't think we need to add additional vegetation, thank you.
Thank you.
Camera?
Yeah, no, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, then next up is, I guess, was this a request from the applicant for the final paving? Or was this just a comment that...
The final paving is a comment in relation to some other, another subdivision that's closing up right now, where the phase one was done significant, several years prior, and now phase two is finally being completed. There was agreement that final paving would not happen until phase two was completed because of the impacts to the road of all the construction vehicles going by. But in the meantime, you have your phase one folks living there for five, ten, however many years before phase two is built. And if the developer is fine with holding the performance guarantee, there's, there's, at some point, the town must decide when we close that out. I know their plans, I believe, are to do a phase two within, what, five or six years? If that happens, you never know what's gonna happen, you know, the economy and people. So I'm just throwing that out there for the board to consider as we go forward, not just for this project, but for others, on how you want to handle final paving with a project. And I, it may be something that maybe needs more discussion with, with the developer, but I wanted to put it on the table because it's something that's come up for some of your neighbors.
Okay, is, so this wasn't a specific request from you? Okay, that was, that was what I was getting at? Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know, my initial thought is we definitely can't let final paving go until a phase two, a future possible phase two is done. That's, that's a non-starter. I don't, seventy-five percent, I don't know if that's the right number. It feels high to me, like, because some people could be stuck for a lot of years in a subdivision that stalls out for the economy with, with only a sub base down. And who knows which lot they bought, they might've bought the lot all the way in and... I don't know, I mean, especially, they're not even proposing this necessarily.
Yeah, it may be a discussion for another time with the board, but I wanted to put it on the table for you. Something, it's something I think about, and something we can talk about further, too, but...
Yeah, whatever's required is how we plan to move forward with it, so.
So currently, what's required is to fully pave it out unless there's a timing waiver, right? I mean, there's no other phase, even, you know, we're only looking at this. This is what we're looking at, so this is the project that they're completing.
To, yeah, to close out.
So it's not like it's a, we're not reviewing a staged, phased project, so what would be...
There was a phase two and sketch plan, that is, that is part of the overall plan, correct?
Potential future, yeah.
Potential future phase two.
Yeah, I mean, it just feels like it needs to be paved out and done, to me, but...
It might be something we wanna workshop, to be honest. Have, have some, a bigger discussion about that, and I can dig further into the history of the other one and how that works out.
Well, I guess the only thing that occurs to me is, on the one hand, you don't want someone with subpar paving for who knows how long, but on the other hand, if the second phase then destroys what you just did, then you've also got subpar paving, so, and you can't, if they've put the second coat on the, the first phase, then you don't really have the leverage to have them fix the first phase. And so, so I don't know, I'm, I'm on the both hands, but... I'm on the both hands, but ultimately, what you want is a decent roadway for as quick as possible for as many people as possible.
So lots of, I guess, what I would say is lots of subdivisions go in. In fact, this one is going to go in and all that construction traffic is going to drive over a lot of roads to get there.
Yeah, well-
So when that one goes in, they're gonna drive all over, all of the same roads, plus this one?
Well, sure, but I'm pretty sure that this, this, oh, I may be wrong on this one, but the nature of this road isn't the same as Mayall or the other roads. It's not as robust and so, I don't know, but I can see the argument for it, but I also don't want subpar for who knows how long either, so, tough call.
Yeah, again, it may be something that would be appropriate for a workshop if, if you're open to that. I think it's a bigger picture type of question that's on.
So I think as far as tonight in this application, we will go with what's required by ordinance, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, open space accessway, any comments around that? I asked my, I asked my irrelevant question already, so I don't have any more.
My only comment, Mr. Sharon, is that even though this isn't an open space subdivision, we voiced a desire for open space and I really appreciate that you did it. I think it'll make the, your future development better and just this whole area better. And I appreciate that very much. I think you're doing the right thing for the community and I, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, else, Tamara? And I agree with that as well. Well, septic, stormwater, infrastructure, locations. I mean, I don't have any comments other than engineering and staff comments, so.
Same, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion points anyone wanted to cover? Nope. Okay. I guess I have a, I'll just put it out there, we're not reviewing it, but, so you have a phase two. You also have this other piece that's going to the Serenity Apartments, which is also intended to be your project, is that?
Nah, I'm gonna be working on the project. It's, it's for an outside entity and he sold off the project to Serenity Apartments LLC.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So it's not your project, it's, okay. And the only thing, and I know it's a different project, but I was just putting it out there for potential thought, if there's any, any synergies that could or should happen, but it sounds like there's not, if it's a separate, at this point, if it's a totally separate entity. So I don't have anything. Okay, so let's do some voting then. First up are the request, the requested waiver. Well, so it's only one. It's only the one requested waiver, right, because, well.
Yeah, the other one is not relevant.
Yeah, right. Well, I guess for process-wise, is it requested or not requested? I guess.
The first one is requested, but we all have a notion here of how it's gonna go, so.
Well, we still need to vote on it, so I don't, I don't wanna leave an unrequested. I don't wanna leave a requested waiver unvoted on.
Might as well get it on the record.
Right, so is the, what I'm trying to understand, is that second one, was it actually requested, even though?
No, that was something raised by staff based on what I apparently misinterpreted from the plan. And if, if you're saying that the lot three one can fit with a particular type of system, then it doesn't seem like something you need to request a waiver to impact the buffer for.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the second one can be cut, but.
So that's not applicable, so we'll vote on the one requested waiver to 401 dot seven dot four dot C.
So, we're going, I'm gonna move to approve the waiver and then we, I personally will be not in favor of it, but I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna do, right, okay. Move to approve the following waivers for the request by Andy Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create thirteen lot subdivision on his forty-nine point eighty-three plus or minus acre property near two, two seventy-nine Mayall Road at tax map twenty-one, lot twenty-six dash twenty in the rural residential and agricultural and business development one zoning districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. The four oh one point seven point four C requirement for hydro geological assessment.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? Fails three, nothing. Thanks for entertaining us in that process. Okay, completeness, so now we would need to find the application complete, which it seems to me that it is. Do you find any gaps, Kristen, at this point for completeness?
No, it was just as the language has, the hydro assessment, because you did not waive it. That would be the missing piece, complete with the exception of that.
Fair enough, so they'll need to now do that. So, let me just, uh, okay, so the way this is written then?
The way it's written is as you voted, so yes.
Yep, okay, so we're good to go, okay, thanks.
Move to find the application by Andrew Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC complete with the exception of the outstanding hydro geological assessment per four oh one dot seven dot one E for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create a thirteen lot subdivision on his forty-nine point eight three plus or minus acre property near two seventy-nine Mayall Road at tax map twenty-one, lot twenty-six dash twenty in the rural residential and agricultural and business development one zoning districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the application has been deemed complete. So next up would be preliminary plan approval. And I'd just like to take a second to page through this, so three will be included. Four will be struck according to our discussion, unless anyone, whoever makes a motion wants to amend that. Five will be part B, basically.
Yep.
Or is what we aligned on? Six, uh, I don't know. So, we aligned on paved, I don't know that we need to, what's the, I don't know, Kristen, help me with the standard width, like, we don't need anything excessive, it should just be a typical?
Yeah, I think the absolute minimum is four typically, they put five, but the minimum, I believe ADA is four. I can double check on that. The material is probably the more substantive piece.
Right.
Whether it needs to be by two minutes pavement or not. And if there's curbing or if it's just part of the road, anyone align? There are drainage standards, if it's gravel, things like that, that kind of detail that they'll need, need to know on how to present it to a final.
So, I mean, curbing is great, but it might not be required depending on topography and everything, so. In my mind, I was thinking of paved, ADA would obviously be the minimum. Feel like we could give them some flexibility as, as far as like where it's located. I don't think we need to prescribe all that.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need like special curves or anything like that.
No.
You know, the, providing a sidewalk is the key and I don't, I, I don't know, they haven't proposed it, so they maybe haven't thought it through, but I don't.
Are we talking though, like it's part of the road? Are we talking something that's inset?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure it makes sense for us to prescribe it yet.
You wanna leave that to them, okay.
Well, I'd leave it to them to propose. I wouldn't leave it wide open.
Okay, so ADA widths and it's paved.
Paved four foot, yeah, but.
And they would have to come back with a sensible plan, like one option is curved right next to the road, but the site may be more amenable for some reason that it's offset from the road. So I don't think we would want to prescribe it. They could come back. You know, those are just two options, but it could be.
If I may interject, so would the board be acceptable to, you know, a four foot at grade, as Kristen brought up? So it would just be adjacent, a four foot paved area adjacent to the drive aisle and then your shoulders, that a closed drainage system isn't required for the roadway? Something of that nature where it gives people the ability to safely walk, but it's not necessarily going to greatly impact the, you know, water flowing off the roadway and bad structures.
Right.
Okay.
So come back with something that's engineered and makes sense to accomplish that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I think, Kristen, are you working up some language on that one?
Um, I think we can use what we have and say the applicant will include a sidewalk, not right of way.
Yeah.
If you wanted a sidewalk along the internal subdivision road to be shown on the plans at the minimum width required for ADA standards.
Well, yeah.
Can we just say four feet to make it the words less, or does that need to?
Yeah, if you'd like to, as a four foot wide by two minutes paved path. Ended there.
Okay.
If that works, do you?
Okay.
I think that works, okay, seven. So this is engineered plans. I think, is this the one you were asking whether you could do, not do all the engineered plans upfront? You were looking for some flexibility with locations and whatnot?
Yeah, so more or less prove, you know, with the sheet five, we've proved that we can make grading work for the site. We're just hoping that the more defined plans can be part of the building permit process so that, you know, we'll know the exact footprint of the house and the location of where we're hoping to put it prior to giving you a fully engineered design.
So it seems like, what's that?
If, if I may.
Yeah.
The, so the building permit process is separate from the driveway permit process? And if you approve a plan that has, a subdivision plan that has engineered driveways, you don't have to get a driveway permit because it's already engineered on the face of the subdivision plan set. And with the ones that are steep like this, that's what our, our consulting engineer was suggesting, that they be pre, effectively pre-engineered, because otherwise that piece has to happen at driveway permit process. And we, right now, don't, you know, review those from an engineering, they're reviewed by codes. So it's preferable for the ones that they're concerned about to have them engineered ahead of time as part of the plan. But not all of them necessarily need it, but those-
Right. So basically, what you're saying, it's not a straightforward, easy way to take care of it with the code office?
Correct, and it's not, yeah, it's not directly part of the building permit items at the same time, but they're kind of different.
Yeah.
And what is my understanding with codes and the, one of the things, I believe Doug had mentioned, was that we could do a driveway area, like a window where the driveway could be, so you're not like it has to be exactly where it's shown, but it can be within this window.
Okay, yeah, and I can reach out to Doug and figure that portion out too.
Right, and yeah, just connect, well, we can make it work, but having them engineered when they're ones of concern is preferable, that's why that was suggested.
So that's, that's what we should do there is we'll, we'll keep this seven as not a placeholder, we'll include it. And then you can work with staff on windows or, you know, whatever, to find something acceptable. Eight is the final paving, so that goes away. Nine, I think you covered. Ten, we didn't talk about, but that's pretty routine stuff. Eleven, uh, that's fine. And then twelve. We're delegating town staff authority on inspections, which I think is fine. Thirteen and fourteen are routine as well, so I think we've got everything taken care of that we need to. Just gonna take this one.
Sure.
All right, last row, all right.
Oh, there you go. Move to approve the preliminary plan of Andrew Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC of a proposal to create a thirteen lot subdivision on his forty-nine point eight three plus or minus acre property near two seventy-nine Mayall Road at tax map twenty-one, lot twenty-six dash twenty in the rural residential and agricultural and business development one zoning districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. This approval is subject to the following conditions. One, two, three, as presented in the September fifth memo to the planning board. Five, as the applicant shall submit a detailed lot layout plan for lot three to confirm its viability as proposed. Six, as the applicant will include a sidewalk along the internal subdivision road to be shown on the plans as a four foot wide business paved path. Seven and nine through fourteen, as presented in the planning, September fifth memo to the planning board.
Nice. Well done.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? I guess I'll just note for clarity that Tamara did intentionally skip and delete a four and eight there. All right, all in favor? It's unanimous, you've got your preliminary approval.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Next up, there's adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Oh.
All right, we will adjourn at eight oh seven. All done.